Good afternoon and welcome to the February 21st, Taverri's City Council meeting. If you have your phone, make sure they're on silent, on high rates. And if you need hearing assisted devices, they're up there in that little tray when you come in. And while we're conducting our meeting, if you can't hear, just raise your hand and I'll know that you can't hear and someone will speak more into the microphone. And if there's any item that you'd like to speak on, please throw out a paper that's up there and give it to Mr. Hayes, who's there in the pretty peach colored shirt. And he will get it up here so you can speak. I'm going to go ahead and remind you all now that we do not speak on first item. The first reading, we do not have any discussion. That'll be on the second reading. All right, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 3, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes from staff?
None from staff.
Counselor?
Move to approve.
A second. Motion a second, all motions favor.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Agenda Item 4, proclamations and presentations. All right, moving on to number five, standing by city attorney and disclosure of ex parte communications.
There, and then plus judicial matters on the change of agenda.
Number six, reading all ordinances, resolutions into the record. Same seat.
Good morning, we have one ordinance at first reading, ordinance 2018-01, an ordinance of the City of Taverri's amending the boundaries of the city by annexing approximately 222 acres of land located west of the Palco Butler Canal, north of Lake Dine, south of East Shirley Shore Road, and east of Shirley Shore Road. Reasonably set up from Lake County Agricultural, A, Community Facility, Research, CFD, the City of Taverri's Plant Development, PD, the City of Taverri's Wetlands Preservation Area, WPA, subject to the rules, regulations, and obligations ordained by the City of Taverri's Council providing an effective date. And we have two ordinances at second reading, ordinance 2018-01, and ordinance of the City of Taverri's amending Chapter 15 pensions in return in Article 5, firefighter's pension for some of the current ordinances of the City of Taverri's, amending Section 15-110, optional forms of benefits provided for modification, providing for severability of provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict here with and providing for an effective date. And the second reading of ordinance 2018-2, an ordinance of the City of Taverri's Florida pertaining to the Police Department Retirement Plan, providing for the inclusion of legally carried warrants of various police officers into the Florida Retirement System, FRS, authorizing the participation of said FRS for eligible employees, amending Section 15-72 to the City of Taverri's code ordinances regarding membership in the city's existing Chapter 85 Police Department Retirement Plan, providing for effective date.
All right, thank you, Suzie. All right, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 7, the consent agenda. Does anyone in the audience have anything on the consent agenda that they are in disagreement on or would like to ask any questions? Okay, counsel?
Move to approve.
A second.
A motion a second, all motions favor.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, which we're down to tab 5 on second reading, ordinance 2018-01, firefighter's pension, Lori Hopper.
This concerns the change to the firefighter's pension plan. On December 1st, 2017, the City of Taverri's received a letter that the fire fighter's pension plan came requesting the city to consider ordinance 2018-01. This amends Section 15-110A to the city's code of ordinance, and this provides an optional form of benefits to firefighters at retirement. The change provides for a pop-up option.
Microphone, please.
Can they speak up? There we go. If you will not close to your face.
All right, shall I start over there?
No.
Okay, I'll pick up where I left off. Ordinance, this ordinance amends Section 15-110A to the city's code of ordinances. This provides for an optional form of benefit to firefighters at retirement. The change provides for what's called a pop-up option to a planned retirement. In the event that his joint pensioner predeceases him, his monthly benefit will automatically revert to the normal form of benefits under the plan. Wanting to make sure this would, there would be no cost, additional cost to the city, the city requested a letter of no impact from the planned actuary, foster and foster. They were to confirm that these changes do not dissolve in the change of evaluation results. The actuaries had provided a letter of no impact confirming the same. A letter is attached, is attached to the agenda somewhere in the packet. In addition, the city also forwarded a copy of the proposed ordinance as well as a copy of another copy letter to the city's pension consultants and company consulting previously involved in the group for additional review and opinion. They provided a memo to the city, which is also in the packet. And they confirmed there is no impact to the plan. The options before you is move to approve and adopt ordinance 2018-01 and amending Section 15-110 of the city's code of ordinances to allow for an optional form of benefit for firefighters' pension, or not for the plan. Staff recommends approval.
Counsel, are there any questions for Ms. Hopper? How do I do?
Move to approve. Sorry.
I'm looking this in all in your favor.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Moving on to tab 6, ordinance 2016-02, Taverri's Police Department, FRS. Was that you, Lori Hopper? All right.
This has been a long time, I think we've been working on this plan for about a year and a half.
Did you speak up or do you really speak up? Just put your, put your voice right in there.
This, this ordinance has been works for about a year and a half. Close your can, Harry. Have that.
Better.
Why don't you pass that other one over there, too?
Okay. Again, this ordinance has been making for about a year and a half. Yeah, I'll try to go.
Hey, why don't you pass that one over to her?
I don't know if that one was on. I guess the next time we'll have the next one.
Better?
Oh, yes.
All right. So, after a year and a half, I'm here with the ordinance 2008-02, which provides that the police department can now join FRS. We are, we still have details to finish up, but this ordinance was the last thing that they needed from the bus and from you in order to reevaluate further. Happy to answer any questions you have about FRS or concerning more questions that you have coming in.
Counsel, you have any questions?
Make a motion, we approve.
A second.
Motion a second, all motions favor.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Yes, ma'am. Okay, we're moving on to Agenda Item 9, which is general government, tab 7, update on Joanne Fabrics Shopping Center rear of building landscape buffer installation, community development.
Thank you, Mayor. With your permission, I would like to display some pictures of the Joanne's Fabrics Shopping Plaza, the rear of the building. The owner of this property contacted the City of Taverri's and inquired about the fence requirements behind the building. This is a picture prior to Hurricane Irma. The owner indicated to us that Hurricane Irma damaged the fence, and he asked if it was a requirement that the fence be repaired. And I instructed him that per our landscape development code, a wooden fence is specifically prohibited as part of a buffer requirement. And that because it is not in compliance with our code, I could not require him to replace something that is out of compliance. But I did say to him that a landscape buffer is a requirement, and the owner has elected to install a landscape buffer per code. He has pulled a permit to install that. I believe the irrigation has gone in. The owner is here today, and he has assured me that he's purchased the plants and has proof with him today. And I believe that there are some citizens that have made a request to be heard in regards to this. And city staff has additional pictures of the fence, but also what we've done is a concept plan based on the landscape plan that was submitted by a licensed landscape architect. We've done a concept plan of what the proposed landscape buffer will look like at maturity with the proper care. So, before and after, and before and after.
So, just for clarity, if I'm not mistaken, the wooden fence got taken out by Irma and is gone. Is it gone?
That is correct.
Doesn't exist?
That is correct.
All right. That wooden fence that's up there does not exist. And the issue is, do you put back a landscape buffer? And he also has the option of putting up a brick wall with stucco, correct?
Well...
And he's chosen the option of the landscape buffer.
The owner has some options, and the owner has elected to go with the landscape buffer.
Okay. And what you've done is superimposed after three years of maturity and fertilizing and sprinkling what it could look like in the future. Bottom photograph there is a future what it could look like.
Yes, this is...
Thank you. That's all.
Okay, we've got quite a few people who would like to speak on this issue, so I'm going to let y'all go ahead and speak. But what I'm going to ask you is to please hold your comments to two minutes. At two minutes, I'm going to be up here jumping up and down. But if you, if you, don't come up in, let's not be repetitive. I mean, if someone else gets up and says what you're going to say, when I call your name, just say, "I'm in total agreement with so-and-so." All right? So, we're going to start off with Mark O'Keefe.
Good afternoon, and Mark O'Keefe at 1806 Carolina Court. I've come today to speak about the buffer and the fence. I had some questions myself, what was going to replace the blown-up, wrong now fence. The city seems to have provided a very nice picture of what the buffer could look like if maintained and fertilized. Of course, our concern in at least the O'Keefe house is what it looks like now. The fence provided a certain amount of, of security in that back area, and people just wandering across the DOT lots. I don't know that the buffer will provide that initially, certainly it may, but I'll grow. But I thank the city for looking into this issue a little further and a way of opportunity for others to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. Right, Linda Moore.
Hello. I live on 209 West Delaware Street, so each time I exit my neighborhood, I see the back of the shopping center, and it is quite a store, eyesore. And also, there are people that transfer from there over to our neighborhood, and some of them have carts from the little store there, the dollar store, carrying whatever. And I am very concerned about that, the people that are coming from the shopping center to our neighborhood. And it just doesn't seem fair that there was a fence there before. And I know there are rules, but the landscaping is a long-term solution, and I know I had professional landscaping done this past spring, and it is gone. So, I am in the process of having that replaced, and what is the guarantee that those plants are going to be there even six months from now?
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Sorry, I can't read right. You won't listen. Tom Taylor?
Hi. I live at 1808 Virginia Court, approximately block in on Delaware from that back of the shopping center. My, my main concern is that, first of all, I was surprised that it wasn't required to be replaced as a fence, which the fence was probably put there in the first place because it was required at the time. But long story short, the, and again, I don't mean to be repetitive, but the landscaping is going to be a while before it takes root and growth to height and whatnot. My biggest concern, a beautiful retired police officer, Deputy Sheriff, down in South Florida, is we already have a house on Carolina Court that is a foreclosure. It's occupied by drug addicts, and the police have been out there, but they tell us they can't get them out. They go back and forth behind this shopping center. They didn't, been in the laundromat, they chased out of there. They cut across the, the, the two retention ponds, the DOT regulates with simple signs that say, "No trespassing." That stops nobody. They go right back there, they're back there behind the shopping center. Landscaping's fine, but I, I believe a fence should be there, a landscape around the fence if they want to. But the fact of the matter is, landscaping is not going to stop people from just walking through and pushing the brush aside and going behind the shopping center and doing whatever it is they do. So, you got to get rid of those people. The foreclosure hasn't come through yet, and it's, we have a really nice neighborhood. We're up in the Beach Road. Some very important people in this town live around us and whatnot, and I think influential people, and I can't believe that any of them are satisfied with this. I know I'm not. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Joanne Mizer?
Hi. I live on 1881 Ben Beach Road in New Orleans. I've lived here all my life. I've lived on New Hampshire. I've lived on condos. I've been out in the lake, and I've been here. And it's eyesore. I have seen people going to the bathroom. I have seen drugs back there being dumped at the same time. It's eyesore. Can you say how long before the, the new plants will be up? How big? When? That could be an answer, if it's going to be high plants now or these. I've seen people sleeping back there. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Other than, can anybody, can the owner state that the plants will be little or big?
Three or...
Three.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right, Bill Cutler?
My name's Bill Cutler. We live at 116 East Delaware Street. Chris just gave some copies of some pictures that we have been taking in the process of what's been going on. The main thing is the security. I mean, yeah, it's an eyesore. We sit out there everywhere, and we look, and you got to give the owner kudos for what he's done to the front of the plaza. It looks fantastic. But the rear is a different story. There's nothing you can do to stop that. We'll see in one of those pictures this morning, for some reason, the guy came through again this morning in his car, he's one of the joy guys that lives in the condos, the old condos, this morning with his significant other, drove over his water pump. He drove right through there, which they do every other day, and went, and went back to the condos. That condo house in the house on Carolina Court, they're running stuff back and forth all the time. Because the fence isn't there, it is now a shortcut for a lot of people. There are people walking through between the two ponds every day. Some of them are just normal citizens, one person is a worker that does stay farm, but she walks through there, which takes a shortcut to walk. The picture is beautiful, what, what it could be, but that is not going to stop people walking through that shrug. You've seen it everywhere, you've seen shrugs up, and people walk through, there's a war spot, and they just travel through there all the time. Two months ago, we've had a series, and then again last month, three small pickups, S10s, Frontier-type pickups, come from behind the store, right where that, that cart we just saw a picture of, and drive through there, flying like crazy, and then down to Manhattan Beach, and then out the back way. We're not trying to be unreasonable, but the fence blocks all the stuff that goes on. We've seen drug dealers go on back there. We watched the guy that walked from our house, or behind our house, walk across through there, go up to the dollar store, wait 10, 15 minutes, then took a short stroll down near the restaurant. Within a couple of minutes, three different people quickly came out separately at a time. They weren't coming out to say hello. It was boom, bang, boom, bang, so they were doing it. We have to find a way to stop it. The cops are supposed to be able to trespass anybody that goes on that car break. The only way they're going to be able to do that is if they're sitting there, because it only takes a minute to walk through there. Unless in that the drive-through, with the golf carts and vehicles. For a safety standpoint for the kids in the neighborhood, that's, that's something that, that needs to stop, and I don't think the bushes are going to stop it. I mean, yeah, yeah, it's beautiful, it looks great, but it's going to take years for it to hit that height. There's got to be a burger, there's got to be a fence, there's got to be something to stop the track coming through there that had four whips. We're even one of them, they're running their bikes. We have nothing against the owner at all. Like I said, he did a fantastic job. But what we're doing right now is not solving the problem. So, there may be an answer to this whole thing. I've talked to different people who used to be on the council, mayors, and then even Richard's force, who I'm certain most of you guys know. But, um, let's see, Roger Palato and Brenda Hartman, Carl Hartman? They knew that there was something going on when they did the fence. So, Richard said that the city needs to do is look up in the Florida statutes, and we're going to send you guys a registered letter that the approval, the development approval documents for the Village Marketplace Center, those are someplace in the city's inventory. In that document, it should say what fence, why the fence was there, what the materials were used to build the fence. And in those documents, they said, when they voted on it, it was to pass through owner to owner to owner. To me, you know, it's a fence, I got to...
You're talking, yeah, you're going to go on up to one minutes here.
That's, that's what's going to happen, because you got to stop people from going through there, and if the bushes aren't going to do it.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Mr. Cutler. All right, counsel, I asked this to be brought up because of all the calls, some show, and all have got the calls, I've been out there, so I just wanted us to have a discussion about this, because we've had some unhappy residents. I believe the property owner is here.
Lori, excuse me? I can give you, there's a petition that wanted to be flown around, but we've said not to at the meeting. There's over 50 to 60 residents back there that want the fence up.
And Mike, are we already issue department?
Yes, ma'am.
You can come on up and make some of the counsel and other department on that.
Okay, I am Robert, I'm the owner. And I would just like to mention one thing. I understand their concerns, and I really appreciate what Bill said, because I worked very hard on that shopping center. I planted 59 trees, and the Taverri's Police Department has been exceptionally, incredibly helpful. I wrote a letter to the chief when I bought the property, giving all the tenants their permission to trespass. We've been extremely active at that. The laundry is supposed to be closed at nine o'clock every night. I terminated the lease of the guy that kept it open 24 hours just to clean up the neighborhood without a new owner. Now, the police are here, so maybe you can, I hope that nobody thinks I'm lying about this, but I remember when the fence came down specifically, there was a Lake County deputy that drove through one evening, and he said to me that he liked the fact that I took it down, and I said, "What do you mean?" And he said, "Well, this is great, because now when I go down, I guess the street where they live," he said, "I can shine my lights, and the bugs can't hide behind the dumpster and fence on me, I can see where they're at." So, he thought that was good. I also installed new lighting that gives eight times the amount of light that was there before. And I know according to the requirements of the code, the wooden fence wasn't allowed, the landscape buffer is, and that's why I immediately moved to put the landscape buffer, and I think it will be nicer for a longer duration. And I'm wondering, with all the discussion we're having here, they brought up a good point about the pond, and I don't know why, maybe we can't get the DOT to do something, because I know I have a property in Orlando where there's a DOT pond, and they have a big chain fence around it. I don't know why they don't do it here. And then I was thinking, when they were talking, "If you want me to do this, I can do it, it won't cost me $50. I can put some four-by-four posts up, and two-by-fours to create a simple little barrier so no vehicles can drive between those ponds." So, I could do that in 30 minutes. We can stop that whole problem, too.
And just so the owners know, there's really, the permit's been issued. It's really hard for us to backtrack now.
I bought the plants, I can show you the receipt. Now, the thing is about plants right now, they're, the nurseries being a little hesitant to deliver them. I checked again today, but the time of year, the three-gallon pots, they're all different sizes, they want to get the mid one. So, the lady called me today, said it's going to be in a few more days or so.
Y'all happy with this?
Yeah, they're going to be those, they're going to be, and I'm, and I'm not trying to argue with it, I don't expect you to believe me, but this reminds me of a situation I had in Orlando. The hedge will grow extremely fast, and the reason I know that, I had an older man that lived next to me in Orlando, and he put a hedge on his property down both sides of the street, and I'm not exaggerating, in a year's time, that fence was like five feet tall. He didn't want people to come through his yard, and I remember it always annoyed me because I blocked my view, but that, the, I can't remember the name, but that kind of the hedge gets really big.
Could, could we allow him to do a temporary fence on his side until the bushes got up? Is that something that we're allowed to do?
That would be a lot of money. I mean, what I could do, though, like I said...
I talked about the temporary, what you said about...
For the DOT? Yeah, that would take...
I'm talking about you said with the wooden poles and the...
Yeah, because that's only maybe 15 feet wide, I could stick that up immediately. And then what I want to say, too, to y'all, please help me get the homeless people out of there. It's a nightmare. I personally, I know you probably see me, Bill, but I drive through there, and I constantly call the police, and luckily, the Taverri's police are so nice, they always tell me, "You're not bothering us, call us anytime, that's what we're here for." But I mean, if you ask them, you will see, I bet I've called there 100 times since I bought the property, and it's gotten a lot better, but they still do come over there.
And as a counsel, we may discuss, maybe the future of, maybe we need to make some changes as far as requiring a burn. That's something we can do, but what y'all are doing now, that's something, maybe y'all could plan a meeting, a homeowner's meeting, where y'all, when y'all meet with him, because this really isn't anything we can do here in the council chambers. I just wanted to recognize y'all, because I know your plight, I understand it, we all understand it, and I wanted to give y'all an opportunity to speak, so maybe this doesn't happen, you know, in the future. We may rethink how it is, but just one more second.
Okay. I've spoken to the DOT, because I told them that they need to put a fence up, because they're aware of the garbage that's going in there sometimes when the storms blow. They're not going to put a temporary fence on that, because it's not required by the state, because it's not deep enough for speaking. But they did say they were going to speak to the DOT, that there's trash going in there, and that that affects the water quality that feeds the lakes. So, you may be hearing from them, I don't know.
And counsel, do y'all have any statements, or would y'all like to ask anyone anything about this? I know a couple of y'all live back there, so...
I just want to say, I want to thank the duty for coming up, and at least being cordial on your concerns, and I'm glad that the property owner is here to speak to what he's doing. And like the mayor said, we have stuck with the rules, but it does give us an opportunity to look at this ordinance a little closer for any future issues, so I just want to say thank you for coming out.
What you're doing here, knowing that, Bill, is this something that's been part of this community for a long time with this building, or is it something that you're fixing up? Everything was nice over there, but I can plan on actually turning it around and moving on, and if, say something like this was done, you said, "Okay, I'm just going to put these, these hedges here," which is probably what you're going to do, and the upkeep is not here," which is probably what you're going to do, and the upkeep is not maintained, they're not going to look like this. There's going to be pathways through there, not get water coming, dead bushes, whatever. Is this something, when I see apertury with proper care, what is your real investment in their neighborhood, your building, your future here, in what I see in both of them pictures you're in there?
Well, I think Bill will tell you, because he gave me a nice compliment one time. I actually go to that shopping center every single day. I don't recognize these people, but there are people that lived in that neighborhood, and I'll say it because it's the truth, and sometimes they'll stop their cars. Like, there's one man that walks a dog, and he stopped me one day, and he said, "You know, I want to let you know, I help you all the time pick up trash out here." I said, "You do, thank you." He said, "Yeah, I think it's so great that the owner is out there working." Neil Kelly, the clerk of courts, out there one night having ice cream, and I'm picking up, and we started talking, I'm watering my trees, and we started talking, and that's when he told me who he was, and I said, "I'm with an attorney." Everybody that lives around there, the people do know that I'm involved in that place. When I was on my way over here today, for example, I had to stop there on my way here just to get out and pick up my parking lot, because it bothers me if I see napkins along the way. I keep the place as clean as possible. And I want to keep it long-term, and I want to make it available. That's why, if you notice, there are still three vacancies there. I'm extremely selective about who I put in the property, I'm not desperate for money, and I don't want to offend anybody, but I don't want tattoo polish. I'm really clamping down hard on that liquor store, we're negotiating a new lease now. Lots of things are changing there, because I don't want it to be a riffraff shopping center at all. It's very important to me, I've turned around, I turned away internet gambling cafes, they call all the time. I'm being very particular about who I let in there, just because it is a personal investment to me, and I do plan on keeping it.
Very good that you use that personal investment.
Yes.
So, something like this, you're going to watch, you're going to be with those landscapers, and watch it being maintained, and monitoring the growth that the new shrubs...
I'll be helping plant the plants. Somebody should drive by, you're going to see me out there. I personally go there with my Ford Ranger truck and water all those trees. That's why they're all still alive, and a couple of them got destroyed in the storm, and one was by the liquor store. I immediately replaced it, I even added more a couple of months ago. Yeah, I mean, it's personal to me, I take care of my plants. And I kind of enjoy that, it relaxes me at night to go there, but I do, those, they get taken care of.
Mayor, Senator, would you like to add anything?
Yes, I too would like to commend you for coming out, and, you know, all the residents. I too live back, back behind there, I'm on Lake Shore Drive, and it's, you know, really is an ice war with the fence being down, but, you know, our ordinance says that, you know, you have to put up either a natural barrier or a fence. You know, I know you're doing exactly what our ordinance says to do, I just think maybe we need to, in the future, maybe have staff looking in a different direction for security reasons, if I can see the issue with the security with not having a fence up there. And yeah, I mean, I think that people that want to go through the bushes, they're going to be able to do that. I mean, we can't force you to put up another fence, but, you know, that's something that maybe you could look at doing to help with the issue that's going on right now. Would you be interested or willing to...
Maybe in the future, what I'm doing is slowly reinvesting all the money the place pays back into the plaza, that's what I constantly do. So I'm budgeting for that. I'm going to have to do places, for example, in a few years, I'm doing work with the parking lot right now. I'll give you an example, the way I am, we had a guy go, if y'all look at the parking lot, you're going to see it was partially striped. I care about the center, that guy got fired, okay? He went out there, and he mixed water in the paint, and if you look closely at those stripes, you can see the asphalt underneath. I immediately got rid of him. That's the way I am, I want it to be done right. And I'm going to continue to do that with the property. I just don't like fences personally, though. I had one in my house in Orlando, and it's always, they're a constant mess. I just thought the landscape buffer and the kind of hedges we're putting up, they get really thick, by the way, they can grow into small trees. So when that hedge is full, but that will take a little while, it's not going to be able to walk through there easily.
And you know these residents aren't going to be watching that hedge?
Oh, that's fine, they can, I'm going to, but I'm going to take care of it, I have no, I mean, I'm not going to, I just spent, it wasn't a fortune, but it was like $20,000, I'm not going to throw my money away.
Well, thank you, thank you for coming, and thank all the residents. So council, are we in agreement that maybe we'd like to see something come back on the agenda that we can maybe discuss? You know, I like the idea of a berm, because if you have a high enough berm, the trees can not take, no matter how long it takes them to grow, at least you're covered that way. But are y'all in agreement, we'd like to bring this back to discuss?
Yeah, I think we need to at least look at it, and not promise to change anything, because everything we do...
Absolutely.
But we at least need to look at it and see why the process behind it, and then if there is something, we'll look at that.
Perfect, well, thank you all for coming.
I want to mention one thing, too, about the DOT. Somebody from the council might want to call the secretary's office. I'll give you an example. Behind the villages, I have some property, and after the storm, people dumped truckloads of debris all over the highway. When you call the local DOT offices, they tell you, "There's nothing we can do, there's nothing in the budget, etc." I called Alahasi, got the secretary to the secretary, and explained the situation and the hazard, and it was immediately cleaned up. And I'm just thinking, if y'all probably called them and said, "We're a nice little town, we would like something for security and goodwill," they really do help.
We called off and...
Oh, you did, okay.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to tab eight. Thank you.
So you want to see some options on property between commercial and residential developments, sort of like this, and some, what our current LBRs say, and some options?
I don't know about options, really. Just look at, the first one, just look at the ordinance and talk about it, and then be the bridge for them.
One of the issues, and what makes this one especially difficult, is when you're planning LBRs that you apply to new developments, you can pretty much write your own code and do that. We have a pre-existing use that has a non-conforming element, which is what this one had. We had a pre-existing fence that, when it fell down, got destroyed by an act of God, and is no longer conforming to our code. And that's why my experience was kind of tied to saying, "Go back and put it on our fence." Now, what we look at is trying to comply with. So just keep in mind that retrofitting existing developments is going to always be harder than providing what kind of roof you want to have in the new progress.
All right, thank you. All right, we're moving on to tab eight, and they counter-request a whole joint public meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, I'll start off by saying what this is not. This is not a discussion on the Hidden River Annexation, it's a complaint and a request. We can't talk about that today, it's not a notice of public hearing today. I have a question for Mayor, if anybody's out here, you think they're going to talk about that, we're not going to hear that today, because of clause I judicial rules. What we have, according to today, that John and I were presented with last week, is that the Hidden River Annexation, and the summonee's request pending for the city's public attention of the county commission. And the county commissioners, apparently discussed it at a recent county meeting, and they directed their manager and attorney to meet with John, who was here last week. And the result of that meeting, what we discussed at the meeting, and what's formalized in your packet and agenda, I think it's nine, tab nine, is a letter from the county manager, Jeff Cole. And it asks the, in seeking a joint meeting between the city, the city council, and the city, and the board of county commissioners. And the purpose for that joint meeting is to allow for open discussion considerations relating to the city's future growth, infrastructure densities, potable water, and sanitary sewers. This was specifically related to the Shirley Shores, the Shirley Shores area. They have asked that that joint meeting, if the council is willing to do it, be held prior to the currently scheduled second reading and a full public hearing on the Hidden Rivers Annexation request, which is scheduled before you for March the 7th, that public hearing. Today is February the 21st. Logistically, I don't know if you could have a meeting before the March 7th, we could potentially do that, if we wanted to look at that. But if you decide to do a joint meeting with the board of county commissioners, it could involve delaying the March 7th public hearing, which you have the authority to do. The county was clear, from its county manager and attorney, that they did not, they're not asking you to delay the meeting necessarily, the second reading, the public hearing on Hidden Rivers, but they were asking that the meeting, the joint meeting then takes place before the second reading. So that's something they wanted to make sure that we understood. The, at the joint meeting, both the county, if there is a joint meeting, held before the Hidden Rivers public hearing, the county attorney and attorney, that it's not proper to discuss the Hidden River. In other words, the joint meeting, the county cannot supplant your duty as public judicial hearing officer to hear and afford due process to the Hidden River applicants and the rest. You still have to have that. So if you do have a joint meeting, you're going to have to speak in global terms, and I think that's, at least I've heard from some people, that's kind of what they're looking for, is to talk about generally our ISBA area and annexations, the requirement that you got a joint meeting, or if you agree for a joint meeting. And I got the request from the county manager, John, I got that, I put both council for the Hidden Rivers parties on notice, that this was something we're going to bring to today, because John and I have the authority to schedule meetings, or to make the ten classes, or to do other things like that. The attorney for the residences, Grant Spang, and he was in favor of the continuance, and if necessary, in the joint meeting. The attorney for the developer, Jimmy Crawford, he's here today, I see Jimmy, I don't see Grant. Jimmy was opposed to the continuance, and I know he's here, and he may want to address council on that issue as well. So after you, you may entertain public comment on this as you want. Again, the request to you is to agree to a joint meeting with the county to discuss the Shirley Shores development area, and the request is that that be held prior to the final reading, public hearing on Hidden Rivers. Choices are to either grant the request, and if possible, to schedule it for the 7th. If not, you would have to continue the current, the hearing, the current schedule, the 7th, or your other option is not to, not grant it, and we'll move forward on our advised public hearings, if that's your desire. One thing that I will say is that we discussed at our meeting with John, me and the manager and the county attorney, that we would also welcome the county commissioners coming to our hearing on March the 7th, and allowing them to be sworn in and to testify or to give statements about what they were feeling toward about the development of the general area. The county attorney said that she could notice, possibly notice, that meeting jointly with the, as the county commission meeting said, that more than one county commissioner could attend and discuss, in sort of a roundtable forum, that, without being in violation of sunshine. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you, all. Any questions?
Just like to add one thing. As you may recall, the city is kicking off its comprehensive plan update, and that is a two-year process. We will, over the next two years, be inviting all stakeholders of future growth in the city to join the council and plan out the future of the city. So there'll be this two-year process, doing a comprehensive plan update. As y'all recall, it's a 20-year plan. Ours is 18 years old, we have two years to update it, and during that process, we will be discussing deliberating, taking input from the public in all the other cities around you and the county, on the future comprehensive plan of the entire city. So this, that's just a reminder that that process has already been kicked off.
All right, thank you, John. All right, I'm going to go ahead and let, we've only got one person who can ask to speak on her, so you heard what Mr. Williams said, so if you abide by those rules, you can come up and argue a couple minutes to speak.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, we appreciate the opportunity. This is probably a function of the process that we've gone through with this proposed development. At the first planning and zoning hearing that got fairly contentious, your planning and zoning chairman, Mr. Santuro, suggested to us that, since the road, the safety of the road is a big issue, we needed to go talk to the county. And so we did that, and this is kind of a function of that. So I would suggest to you that there's a lot of open issues in the ISBA that could be discussed, and we would welcome that opportunity for responsive government, just to get together, and without having all of these formal hearings where you're making important decisions, just be able to talk about it. So we would like to see that that take place. We would prefer that it take place prior to your second reading. We don't think that that hurts the developer, because the timing on them proceeding with building permits, etc., if you're going to take them out in April or May anyway, so we don't see the harm to your development. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm Don Care, 16833 Deer Island Road, my apologies.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I did not fill out a card, but we have briefly responded.
Yes, sir. State your name and your address for record, and you have two minutes.
I'll, I probably, hopefully can do one. Jimmy Crawford, 1201 West Highway 5th and Mount Florida, I represent the owner and developer of that, of that Hidden River Lakes property. And as Mr. Williams said, we do oppose any further post-annexing there. It's been since April last year, it was applied for, it's been postponed, and recussed, and discussed, and cussed, and we wish to move forward. As to meeting jointly with the county, I don't have any opinion. I think that's, it's always good for governments to talk about what could go on with that. And I just would like to get that on the record, and restate my position with Mr. Williams, that we do have a quasi judicial hearing process, and I appreciate the city respecting that. That said, we have no opinion on joint meetings with county.
All right, thank you, Mr. Crawford. All right, young man, did you want to speak? I see, were you waiting to be to speak, or you're just standing?
No, I...
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Okay, council, that's the only one I have filled out, so...
I have a question. Mr. Williams, now, is there any issue with individual council members speaking to an individual county commissioner on this?
No. You can speak to anybody who writes about it under our quasi judicial rules, you have to disclose that.
Right. Now, if we were able, if we were, went to do the workshop or whatever, that's the plan, I mean, that would have to be everybody's, that everybody's scheduled together, and everybody did it before.
Right, whenever the boards meet, there's a, and joint meetings happen occasionally, they're not real common, but there are joint governmental meetings, and they happen, and they have to be joint meetings.
I would rather just, you know, individually, if we wanted to get together, or be able to, county commissioner would have to say that, I just, you know, as far as the precedents this would set, I just, you know, if we have an annexation, or we're going to have to, you know, get together with the county commission, and set up this meeting, you know, if we have a one-acre parcel that wants to be annexed in the city, I just don't think that we need a set of precedents of, you know, setting up a meeting with the county commission to discuss our annexation, that we're, you know, we're able to do that on our own, so at this time, I would like to, you know, just not worry about doing the workshop.
Side of the camera motion, or any questions?
Probably direction and consensus, for sure. You brought me down.
What item were they wanting to be drawn?
This item.
Okay, go ahead, two minutes later, your name when you're at this.
Good afternoon, my name is Lori Pittner, 15825A1Circle. My concern is, if you're going to be putting together your 20, your comp plan, it's going to take two years to do it, why would we rush through on annexing something before the plan is put together? Thank you.
That really wasn't appropriate for this.
So, Mayor, I've got a couple of things, Bob, that I'm kind of wondering about. We've had the ISBA for over a year.
Probably closer to two or three.
Right, and this developer has been trying to start this process for almost a year. I'm just kind of wondering, why all of a sudden is it a rush for the county commissioners to want to talk to us? It makes no sense. Can he not just send us a letter, and give us their opinion via a letter?
We haven't, John and I haven't met the county commissioners, we've only met their representatives, so their people met with our people, and we talked, and they just said they were conveying what the county commission told them.
And that's fine, and I don't mind, I don't mind a joint meeting, I do mind holding this up any larger one has been held up. But I don't mind having a joint meeting with the county to talk about all the ISBA, to see what they're looking at. I mean, they agreed with the ISBA when we did the ISBA, they signed up on the ISBA.
Just this, you know, this is a contiguous property and has nothing to do with...
Correct, I'm talking about the, I'm going to say assumption that the county wants to talk to us about the ISBA, right?
Well, I think they want to specifically talk to you about this in particular. Well, I think they might specifically talk to you about this particular area, what I call the Shirley Shores Road area.
Right, and they can't because...
To talk about the specifics of the reason.
Right, so let's just say it's the ISBA and have them send us a letter.
And like John pointed out, this is contiguous land, and this is voluntary annexation of a contiguous land, and it's not an ISBA non-contiguous land.
Do we entertain a motion?
I can make a motion that we can go forward at this time with the joint meeting with the county commission.
Second.
Right, we have a motion of second, any more discussion?
Yeah, just to make a quick note, I mean, this is our self-agreement of consequence as far as let's get this thing going, it's been a long time. And the next two weeks are going to be really tight schedule wise for me, I didn't, wouldn't care if you guys did it, I know I would be there for it. And I don't think, I think two weeks, within the next two weeks, I think we should not do this. Just invite them to come March seventh and talk about it.
Right, we have a motion of second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
That would be the one you asked me, yeah.
But that's not what this was about, uh, it's not what this is. All right, we're going to move on to tab nine, the annexation policy, non-contiguous property, real property development.
Thank you, Mayor. On April 15th, 2015, the City of Taverries approved ordinance 15-08, adopting an inter-local service boundary agreement with Lake County in which the county consented to annexation by Taverries of any non-contiguous real property in the unincorporated area within the inter-local service boundary area, subject to water and sewer infrastructure provisions. The proposed annexation policy codifies guidelines that city staff follows in determining if non-contiguous properties seeking city services may be immediately annexed. Under the policy, city staff will conduct a level of service analysis to determine if city services can be provided without undue hardship or significant negative fiscal impact to the city. Property that is subject to immediate annexation shall follow the statutory framework for voluntary annexation governed by Chapter 171 of the Florida statutes, the inter-local service boundary agreement with Lake County, and City of Taverries land development regulations. The options for council are to approve the annexation policy for non-contiguous properties or to deny the policy. The staff recommends that the city council moves to approve the annexation policy.
Right, council, any questions for Mr. Fitzgerald?
Mr. Williams, could you kind of go over the city of the area? Because it's still just red and kind of, what does this mean?
Well, the ISBA area we negotiated and it's been in place, like Bob said, two or three years, is a large area of potential future growth to the city of Taverries. It extends southerly out to 455 and then out toward Deer Island area, and then it goes out to the east toward Mount Florida, out to the Rockford Day Road. So it's a, and then includes the Lake Park area. It's a lot of area that's our future growth that we're anticipating would be growth over a 20-year period or so. Because the, because the, under the ISBA, the city can annex non-contiguous properties, then there, the staff wisely thought that there should have policies that the council makes as to which ones to look at. For instance, do we want to go to the most remote end of the ISBA and annex a piece of property that doesn't have water, doesn't have sewer, that stretches our fire and police resources? And so what they've tried to come up to here with three days, a policy outline that helps guide them in the administration of the ISBA as to which properties they ought to recommend or not recommend. And that policy gives a guideline to consideration of people who are coming wanting to annex it. So we're going to look at specifically, are there utilities available to the property? And do we have adequate fire and police protection ability if they have this with other facilities?
Very good. And I'd like to, why, look at that explanation, maybe this is for Mr. Jury. When we put together our comprehensive plan, doing two years for the next 20, are we making the assumption of our, all this ISBA land could possibly be brought into Taverries? Or is that something we, in these next two years, if something hasn't been brought in as an ISBA property, we aren't putting that in our, and it's done within that period of time? You understand where I'm going with this? I want to know, within these next two years of planning, anything that hasn't been brought into the city yet, do we still plan that out as if it's part of our comprehensive plan over the next 20 years?
Yes.
It's a, that's right.
So the comprehensive plans will address the entire ISBA area, and we will be obtaining input from everybody on what everyone's thought of the existing city and the future growth of the city should be. It'll take a lot of public meetings, a lot of public input, a lot of thoughtful discussion and dialogue between citizens of the Taverries, the folks that are not in the area as well right now. And then you will update your comprehensive plan based on all of that.
Great job with radio, just speaking.
Right, council, any more questions?
I've got two. One of them, it is just a question on bullet number two, where it says, approve city through utility connection application required for non-contiguous properties seeking city utility and services. Should that not say when available? You must hook up when services are available?
That's what the agreement will say.
Okay.
That you have down the agreement.
Right.
And it will say that.
Okay.
Our ISBA, which the county currently says that for us to be able to annex non-contiguous properties, it has to have utilities currently available or under its utility agreement to connect to, when available.
Right, okay. The next question is, is on number six. Number six, and it's just, the city administrator shall have the authority to approve a payment plan for no more than five years for any annexation, rezoning, and future land use charge fees, interest rate, plus prime one. Does that also include utility hookups? Or does that not include utility hookups?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Number six.
Number six. It's just about the authorities for payment plan. I'm just hoping that the utility...
I believe that was to be applied to impact fees, but the actual plumbing permit to hook up to the services would not be included. The owner would still have to pull a plumbing permit with a licensed plumber to hook into the ladder.
So this is all over impact fees and annexation fees?
Right.
Okay, that's what, that made, made clear. Thanks for your questions.
Counsel, how did you like the move?
Make a motion, we approve.
A second. A motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Move on to tab ten. FY 2018, 2019 budget workshop and term calendar for...
Thank you, Mayor. We put together a pretty comprehensive calendar for you. I think you have received a copy in your packet, which includes the staff notes for some of our... But we put together a summary on your agenda, on the agenda summary packet. And in the comprehensive calendar for the 2018-19 term and budget process, Truken Village statutes require that the first public hearing for the budget and village rate, tentative budget hearing be held not less than 65 days after the first day of term, which is generally July 1st. Your term goes through July 1st and then up to 65 days later. The city anticipates receiving certification of taxable value from the property of Fraser determining the F-519 village rate calculations on May 31st, 2018. That's called a best estimate. And with all of this in place, we've anticipated that June 20th would be the first budget workshop for this board, and staff would present the general fund budget for F-119. Then on July 18th, there would be a subsequent budget workshop, and both of these are regular council meetings. July 18th would be enterprise and special fund presentations to the board. And then we've added an additional budget workshop in July because of July 4th falling on a holiday, and that is July 25th. And this would allow councils to discuss the budget and also set the maximum tentative village rate for 2019 so that we can give that information to the property of Fraser for the term notice. August 1st would be a city council budget workshop, August 15th, city council budget workshop votes are coincided with city council meetings. And then the two public hearings would be September 5th as the first public hearing to adopt the tentative budget and the tentative village rate. And September 19th, 2018 would be the final budget public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Stone.
And staff will reflect, supports the calendar.
Any questions, council? I'll join the move.
I'll go ahead and second that. Motion to approve the calendar.
Have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Looking forward to it this morning. All right, we're going to move on now to agenda item 10, old business. All right, we're going to move on to agenda item 11, new business. I have someone, Don Care, would like to speak on new business.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to compliment Bob Tweedy and his staff. They've just done an exceptional job working with, I'm sorry, Don Care, 16833 Deer Island Road. I'm involved in the Sunnyland chapter of the Antique Classic Boat Society, and I run the sponsorship program. So this time of year, I'm generally out promoting the city and working hard in order to get new sponsors to come into the program. We had a little bit of a hiccup last year when all the docks disappeared, and for a boat group, that's kind of an important thing. So some of our, about 70% of the people that come to our show and bring boats are from out of state, I mean, way out of state, we're talking New York, Minnanshire, et cetera. So we've had to do a little extra selling in order to get some of those folks to come. But I'm very happy to report that Bob and Matt and Sherry worked really hard, and I know you approved getting some temporary docks for us. And by doing that, we were able to promote that fact. We're not going to be able to house everybody's boat and water this year, but doing that helped us. Our sponsorship program is now ahead of schedule. We have, only have one entity that said they're not coming back, and it was because the guy's wife had a heart attack. And we sold three new sponsor programs. So Bob's staff does a great job, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Care. Anybody else in new business? All right, we're going to move on to audience to be, oh, Ms. Burley, I'm sorry. I didn't know she was in new business. She's in audience to be heard, so...
Danny Burley, 214 North Minnanshire Ave. I'm going to give you a little history on the Asiola Hotel, which served as our city hall from February 1980 till it was torn down in March of 1992 for this building. An issue of the Taverries Herald early in 1890 carried this announcement. "The Asiola Hotel, newly opened in the Jones Building, has modern toilets and showers on every floor. Like so much of downtown Taverries, the history of this building is linked directly to the fire of 1888. Construction was begun in 1887 by Charles Sinclair and Associates, who had it designed for an office building, when the fire of April 9th destroyed the Peninsula Hotel, the Taverries House, and two roomy houses. A decision was made to convert it to a hotel. Many times over the years, the building changed hands. Frank Jones held title from 1895 to 1907. During this time, the management changed and the name changed to W.B. Whipple Hotel. In 1910, the name again became Asiola. Catherine C. Budd from New York leased the hotel in 1925 from R.L. and Annie Nutt, who bought it in 1920. She brought with her a full staff and attempted to modernize the operation. Two years later, A.G. Wisner took over the lease and changed the name to Biltappet. With the collapse of the Florida boom and the market crash of 1929, the hotel closed, never to be reopened. In 1945, J.R. Legg bought the building. He installed a Dr. Pepper bottling plant at the rear, which operated only briefly. The entire building was remodeled with three storerooms on the first floor and 15 apartments on the upper floors. In recent years, the Ed Hurston Company again did a complete remodeling, converting almost the entire building to office space, culminating a complete cycle back to the original plans for the Jones Building. However, the building was not occupied long when it was abandoned and stood empty for over a year. In December of 1979, the Taverries City Council agreed to purchase the Asiola Hotel for use as a new city hall, combining all city offices under one roof. Work has, was begun immediately, and the remodeling and refurbishing went swiftly so that the city was able to move its operations into the building in February of 1980 during our centennial celebration. A plaque in recognition of the historic significance of the Taverries City Hall was presented to the city council in February of 1990. Engraved on the plaque is, "This building, constructed in 1887 by Charles Sinclair, survived the great Taverries fire of April 9th, 1888, and was opened as the Asiola Hotel. Since that time, it has seen many uses and has been witness to many events in Taverries' history. It is in recognition of the importance of this historic site that the Preservation Board of the Taverries Historical Society causes this plaque to be erected." The presentation was made to council member Brenda Von Hart, on who chairs the city hall building committee.
Thank you, Ms. Burley. All right, audience to be heard. Anybody in the audience would like to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. T.J. Fish, Alvin and Tim, Juniper Court, speaking as a citizen for change. I have lived and been serving Taverries in some capacity, volunteer or otherwise, for the last 16 years. I have a very intimate knowledge of the growth plan for Taverries. So when I came to the last meeting, and I listened to your discussion about the State Road 19th corridor and 561, potential there, and I've listened to the ISBA conversation, and I also attend county commission meetings, or at least watch them online, and I'm well aware of one of the reasons why I think the commission reached out to you. I watched the discussion that Houston's attended to annex property all the way on the east side of Mount Florida. And I could understand why people were very concerned about that, because that's a pretty dramatic change in character for East Side. But then I also think about the fact that you have had, now it'll be three years in April, by the way, your ISBA with Lake County. And I am very interested in what happens between here and Mount Florida. I'm very interested in what happens out on the peninsula and along the 19th corridor. And I'm very interested in what happens out 448 for a couple of reasons. Because I think the city of Taverries is a very unique situation, that you've had water and sewer in the ground for almost two decades, for two decades now. And when you go out there, you come to Lake Jim, and you come to rural area, Longenskopf Farms are out there. But there's also something I don't want anybody to forget about, because when I look at the ISBA map, especially that area toward Astetula, I notice, you know, you've got the Mokler Canal, you've got wetlands, you've got mining operations, you've got, that's eventually going to convert to something, you've got sugine character. And that's a road I really don't want to ever see widen, but you know how that goes. The point is, with those urban surfaces out there, you are in a unique situation that you can guide the economic growth of the city of Taverries, especially around that job center that's planned in South Ridge Industrial and all that land and holding. But as you go east or Lake Jim, you can actually help be stewards of the environment, providing central sewer surfaces where they are needed. There's a lot of septic tanks out there that shouldn't be there. Our lakes could do better than having septic tanks. In fact, giving you a really good example, Gator Inlet, right here on the Door Canal. In fact, giving you a really good example, Gator Inlet, right here on the Door Canal. There used to be ten mobile homes sitting there with septic tank affluent running into the canal. And the city now has put that property, as a property owner, in a situation where you can get fair use of your land because you're going to be in urban services. So there's creative ways that you can protect and be stewards, because, and I mean this very seriously, maybe it hasn't occurred because it seems so far away, but the north shore of Lake Apopka is one of the most unique ecological places at all. It rivals the Canapa Seashore for the birding opportunities and the number of species and the ecological benefits. And so everything that Taveri's can do in providing urban services in a smart, efficient way while being stewards of the environment, I see that as your role. Because some people forget, this agreement with the county, you have a boundary with another municipality down there. Astetula is just south of there, and then you've got Orange County to the east, and Lake Dora is what it is, and Mount Dora, and Leesburg, you've got ten uses. Everybody has dominance at their borders. I watched what happened. Look where downtown Leesburg is, and look where downtown Roof is, and those two cities' ISBAs touch each other. So planning for the future is always a good thing, but I think rather than, you know, worrying about any density is terrible and all those things, it's more, how can we do it in a way that keeps Lake County real forward and real close? So I appreciate your consideration, and I love the complaint idea. I think it's time to look at future land use out there and plan for the future. Thanks.
Thank you, T.J. All right, for the more audience to be heard.
Vance Yocum, one two six one nine Milwaukee Avenue, Taveri's. I'm being good today. I'm not going to talk about that place that you don't want me to talk about, because I don't want Mr. Williams to get mad at me, or the mayor to get mad at him. The, what I want to do is, though, I know that the benchmark consortium report has come out, and I talked to Ms. Houghton, and she has her copy. I've seen the copy, because I've sat down with the director of that entire program, and I've also known two other cities here that have it. And I just wanted to encourage you to maybe get to the point where you have a public session where those issues are described. I've been told by another party that they thought maybe the metrics that are in that aren't that strong. But anyway, it's a good start. There are other programs that are starting out. I just found one yesterday where there's like a hundred cities that are involved in it. They're getting grants to start doing performance metrics and to start tracking things by statistics. And I'm going to be looking more at that, and I'll pass that on to you folks. Because, you know, I want to, as a taxpayer advocate, I would like to see continued monitoring of the government costs. One thing I would suggest is, I've found as, in following this development issue, is that I communicate with several hundred people on Facebook, but a lot of times, the senior officials in the cities and also the elected officials are not on Facebook. I would suggest that you consider setting up Facebook accounts, even if you don't want one for your personal account, but set one up with your name and then add on the end "Taveri City Council" or something like that. And the same for some of the leaders in the city. Because what happens is, I come across things, I'm meeting with folks like the ones that are sitting here, I can send out information that I've gathered, and links, and videos, and everything else, and it's a lot tougher to use email these days to keep up with it. But I can send that to you folks. I communicate to the superintendent of schools by Twitter, but she doesn't get my Facebook notices, and yet I can send that to all of the county, all of the board members, the school board. So I think you should look at that, because the school board had a consultant come in and say, "You guys are out of touch," because they weren't letting the school principals have accounts and everything else. They've changed that. They're encouraging people. One teacher has written a issue related towards this gun shooting in South Florida, and it has gone seven hundred thousand sheriffs. And it's putting her and the city on the map because she had some extremely good advice. And you ought to be able to be part of that communications process by having that. And I think I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vance. Thank you so much. All right, anyone else in the audience? All right, we're going to move on to your forums.
The auditors are wrapping up two weeks of hunkering down with our team, and they would like to sit down with one council member to talk about general status of the city, where we've been, where we are, where we're headed from your perspective. Tomorrow morning at nine thirty, and I'm just checking in to see if any council member would like to join me, they've interviewed the city administrators, so they'll interview me. And if there's somebody who, they just want to pick one council member, ask sort of general broad questions about the city and their perspective.
We picked Troy.
We picked Troy.
All right, very good. I'll work with Troy, and we'll get to there. There's a soft opening this evening at the new restaurant, Coco's, K.O., K.O., it's at the bottom of the newest hotel on Ruby Street. I think they're doing a soft opening from five thirty to eight thirty, and certainly they've invited anyone who would like to come and see their new restaurant, add to our downtown entertainment district to come join them tonight between five thirty and eight thirty. And that's all I know.
All right, thank you, John. Susan?
I have a good thing, thank you.
Chief?
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Henshaw?
That's it, I.
Laurie? Chief?
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
Our opening reception this Friday night, great entertainment, lovely food, meet artists, come out, great collection. That's all I have. Please.
Mr. Fisher, all right. Bob Grenier?
Just a couple of things. I'm not paying a Tegucia, Fastest Four Road Trip TV show, they were all last week, I believe it was. To start, there's been actually a few days of filming and taping. They started with interviewing Mr. Drury, and Brenda Smith, and Rick Reed, and myself for about an hour or so. And we went down and filmed Neil Bogus over at the railroad train with his conductor uniform, and the train was coming in and out of Mount Dora to Taveri's, got some film footage of that. And then we went over to the Taveri Pavilion on the lake, and it moved Tammy over here and did a wonderful job. Took a little bit to get used to it, but then you really did a wonderful job in that interview at Pavilion on the Lakes. Matter of fact, I think Bobby Duffin said that they might have had a preview party there at Pavilion on the Lake as well, when the TV show is beginning. And they'll be coming back, because they want to be on a seaplane, film what's like being on a seaplane landing and taking off, being on the train itself, and then a few more of you with yourself, and probably Brenda Smith and Mr. Drury as well. So that is going well, and I'm looking forward to it. I think that's going to air sometime in June, so we'll make sure everybody knows when that Fast Four Road Trip TV show will air. Second of all, a couple of days ago, Leesburg went through something that we went through back in two thousand seven, I believe. The Mo Moore's House was torched by someone, a vandal, whatever it is. You know, I keep thinking how hard many of us work at historical preservation. City of Taveri's actually took it under its wing after our Woodley House was burnt down and building on historic foundation. It's bad enough that many governments, city, county, state, federal, aren't in historic preservation. We lose so many places to progress. Developers come in and let all historic places, it's bad enough having to deal with preservation and fight to keep the history alive, to have a place like the Woodley House and get beautiful eighteen ninety-two Mo Moore's House in Leesburg. I don't know if you've seen the pictures, just being destroyed by fire and water, because the firemen have to come in there and oust the fire out. So very sad, my heart goes off for city of Leesburg, because everyone was an iconic structure there, as the Woodley House is for us. And then, thank you further, history on the Asiola Hotel, which was right here, stood right here. You might have further mentioned that the building was eighteen eighty-eight, that died in Charles Sinclair, him and his brother, Governor Sinclair, were buddies of Major Alexander Sinclair. And of course, I brought it up because Sinclair Street, if you're wondering who that is for, that's the brothers who were friends of Major Alexander Sinclair, who invested in our city of Taveri's. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Bogus. I only have two things. One, I'm going to call DOT tomorrow to see if I gain traction by putting things up on the Internet. And I have Fred Khan, who comes over from Holland every year for the antique boat festival. I met him with us at the antique boat festival, so I'll get to see him again this year. Councilmember Snell?
I've got a couple of things. For some of you out there that don't know, every council member up here has an opportunity to have a meeting with Mr. Drury before this council meeting. And I just wanted to let you know that on those meetings, sometimes I drag him out in the city, and we go walking for, I don't know, hour, hour and a half. But I'm saying all of this is to say that when we see issues, the staff does a fantastic job of being responsive. So thank you for all you do. Thank you, John, for getting our concerns, because our concerns are their concerns, out to the people who had the boots on their ground to take care of the issues. Thank you very much for that. Next thing is Vance. Thank you for saying Taveri's correctly, finally. And for all of you who are really interested in this, today is sticky bunda. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Vice Mayor Singer?
I just want to thank the concerned residents for coming out. It's always nice to have, you know, people come and tell us their concerns, and, you know, we can't always fix everything, but, you know, it's nice to know what's going on. And like I've said many times, you know, we only know what we know. So thank you so much for bringing those concerns to us, and, you know, we're going to do what we can to help out. I know it's an issue that concerns a lot of us, but thanks once again for coming out and bringing that to our attention. And I also want to recognize, we have two of our youth council members here. For those of you who don't know, we have a mayor's youth council, where it's some Taveri's High School students. We have five Taveri's High School students that will shadow a council member, and then they'll do a shadowing of the department head, and they learn a little bit of what it takes to run a city government. So I just want to thank them for coming out, and thank Mr. Lyer for chaperoning them. So thank you very much for being here. And last thing, I'm anxious to see our new audio systems, because it'll be the last time we have to do this audio system. Everybody be happy down there. That's all I have this time, Mayor.
All right, so I just also want to thank all you residents. I, maybe it wasn't the outcome that you were hoping for, but since permit was already pulled, our hands were tied, you understand that. But thank you for coming down and discussing this and letting us know that your concerns, because that just makes for a better Taveri's. It really does. And hopefully, you'll, you know, be able to atone the situation that's over, and y'all will be happy. That's what I hope. Also, I want to thank the youth council members. Saw y'all back there, I always like seeing y'all, so good job for coming tonight. And for anyone else, I didn't mean to offend anyone when I kind of cut people off, or we just have certain rules that we have to abide by. And so, ma'am, I know you came up and spoke, and I'm like, no, 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 you can't go there, but it just, we have certain rules, so thank you. That's okay. But that's how we all learn. So, but again, I thank y'all for coming in, fighting for what you believe in, and you're going to get your chance on March the seventh, so. And without further objection, this meeting is adjourned.